Okay, I will get us started. We do have a quorum, so I'll just get us started. I'll call our work session being held via Webex of January 12th, 2021 to order. And the topic of our work session is community center feasibility at the American Legion property. And I will just pass it to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to provide some context, the American Legion has communicated that they intend to sell their property and to work with a future buyer to ensure that the post or post 435 has a new physical space within the future development. Careful design considerations must be established due to the surrounding green space, adjacent wetlands, and since the location is a very important location for the community. Council directed staff to proceed with a two-step process to allow policymakers, the community, and stakeholders like the Legion and any potential developers, the time and process to work towards a development that will be an asset for all. The first step is to consider the feasibility of the city purchasing the property and building a community center on the site. And the second step is to develop a small area plan with design standards and how potential development relates to the park. Tonight's work session will focus on the first step. Recreation Services Director Merkel will present some history and research on the community centers. And Finance Director Regis will review the potential costs and impact on taxpayers. We also asked our financial advisory firm, Ellers, to do some research. And Rebecca Kurtz is here to provide some brief comments and answer any questions. Representatives from the Legion are also here tonight with us. And we've asked them to provide some brief remarks and answer any questions following staff's presentation. Staff had to do this research quickly and put in long hours over the holidays since the Legion has asked us to expedite the process. And I understand why they wanted us to speed it up, but I just want to thank staff. I was really grateful that they did this quickly. Bottom line is the staff recommends that we not pursue buying the property and building a community center for two main reasons. Building a modern community center is very expensive and would need to be mostly financed via increased property taxes. Also, the Legion has made it clear that they will sell to a buyer that can provide space for their posts to meet and socialize. It will take several years for the city to plan, build, and fund a community center, and that is not consistent with the Legion's plans. However, we understand there is a need in the community for some of these amenities. And Director Merkel ends with a recommended path forward. Tonight, we need council to provide guidance on whether to pursue buying the Legion property. But again, I am concerned that we don't meet some of their criteria for desired buyer or pursue Director Merkel's recommendations to explore more cost-effective options to meet resident needs in this area. If council does decide the latter, we will continue with the small area plan and discussions with the Legion to see whether it makes sense for us to partner in a future private development to provide community spaces. This small area plan process will provide for much more robust and effective community engagement. So if there aren't any questions for me, I can ask Director Merkel to go through the presentation.
All right. Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. As City Manager noted, I am Amy Merkel, the Recreation Services Director. And I just want to thank our mayor, council, and our guests from the American Legion for attending tonight. It's always a great opportunity to talk about recreation in our community and really looking at the needs and how they can be addressed now and in the future. So I really look at this as a great opportunity. In the past many weeks, I've been researching what it takes to construct and operate a modern-day community center. And I've been able to reach out to colleagues around the metro, the region, and even outstate of the Twin Cities and talk about what goes into running a community center and all the needs they address. And they are wonderful facilities. And you'll see through the recommendations, the timing might be off with this opportunity. But I do think down the line, we will continue to try to address the needs, whether it's in a community center or in other ways. And so tonight, we'll be presenting the research. We gathered a lot of intel from our surrounding communities. And they've been gracious not to share their operating budgets of their community center, their original construction budgets. We've compiled a lot of data. And Finance Director Regis has put that together tonight to look at the costs. And hopefully, we'll make a great decision for the community moving forward. All right. So hopefully, everyone can see that all right. The history of the community center in Richfield goes all the way back to 1961. The current community center operated as the Hennepin County Augsburg Library. And when they sold that in 1974 to the city, it became the Richfield Community Center. And when you walk into this space, and if you think library, you can kind of grasp that it was a library in one time. And we've kind of repurposed those spaces to include meeting room spaces. We do run our dance program out of the downstairs and exercise programs. But we currently don't have a fitness facility, our pool facility at this community center. In 1999, there was a referendum that was posed to the community to vote on the construction of a new community center. So this has surfaced before. In 1998, the council at that time approved a feasibility study on a proposed recreational facility. And they put together a task force. And I was reading some of the notes from the task force. They did diligence. They went out and toured community centers, met with other city officials, and officially put together a recommendation to the council to construct a new facility that was going to be on the west side of Veterans Park that included fitness equipment, a pool, meeting spaces, and offices. And that went to the Richfield School Board election in 1999. And it was defeated a four-tone ratio. And times have definitely changed. We have many new residents in our community. So there's definitely new opinions surrounding a community center. And they've been identified in our 2018 Parks Master Plan that involves a lot of community input. And some of the repeated asks or desired needs included indoor programming spaces, meeting rooms, banquet facilities, and indoor playground, exercise equipment, and other recreational facilities. So that's all housed in our Parks Master Plan. And it's listed as a high priority, future priority down the line that needs to be addressed. And last year, we did our community survey and got a better understanding where residents were at in support of a community center. And you can see from the results that overall, the community is strongly supportive or somewhat supportive of a new community center almost equally with a new building at Woodlake Nature Center. And overall, it's nice to see that residents feel like our parks provide excellent opportunities, are good. In talking with a lot of colleagues from other cities, I really wanted to compile some reoccurring thoughts that they imparted with me to consider. And one of them is that most community centers do need to be subsidized. Those that make money often have different demographics. A lot of them come from very affluent cities such as Eden Prairie and Minnetonka. And in meeting with those two cities, they gave me examples of why their community centers are not subsidized. And a good example is Minnetonka. In talking with them, they are able to offer $90 an hour private tennis lessons that are sold out months in advance. They're really popular. So they're able to offer some high-end opportunities for residents. They also noted to determine if there's city-owned land that can be utilized for a city. And we've been talking with the city of Bloomington. One of their standards in moving forward with a community center was that it needed to be on city-owned land to save the money and pour more money into the actual facility versus buying land. They also said, make sure you factor in ample parking spaces. The cost for a parking ramp for the city of St. Louis Park, they were looking at $15 to $20 million. And they were a few steps ahead of where we are now in 2014. They were looking at a $40 million community center proposal. But then, when they looked at the land space needed for parking, they didn't have enough. These huge facilities need a lot of parking spaces. And to accommodate that, it was going to be an additional $15 to $20 million, which their council ultimately voted against the construction of the community center. And also just understanding operating costs. So see, with community centers, the recovery is about 60%. And in looking at some of the data from the other cities we've talked with, that's pretty accurate, I would say. You also want to look at how a facility would potentially impact private businesses. You want to, if at all possible, make sure you're feeling a niche that's not built. If you are going to be directly competing with a lot of other businesses in town, you may want to factor in, is there a different way we could offer this amenity that would directly impact their business? And also, indoor aquatics are very expensive. That was kind of a standard throughout our discussions. And looking at paying for a community center, things to think about are the overall land costs, construction costs, operating expenses, your mechanism for subsidizing costs if it is through taxpayers and taxes. Also, a really important one, we have an older park system, is also looking at your other priorities. And would a community center and its costs really prohibit you from investing in these other facilities? And I automatically think about our nature center that definitely needs improvements. Our outdoor aquatics do as well. We have our original pool liner from 1960 that we need to work on replacing. So these other important projects would be really tough to do if all of our funds are going into a new community center. And also, just the expenses that go into the renovation and improvements. A lot of the organizations I talked to talked about, right from the beginning, have a replacement fund established because they need constant reinvestment. And we look at the needs of our community. You have the ones that really bubble up to the top that a community center would fulfill. Our meeting spaces, banquet facilities, indoor space for fitness, increased recreation programming space, indoor play area, especially when it's cold in Minnesota, indoor sports courts, and also year-round aquatics. And whatever is decided, we won't have a community center in the next many months or year or years. So in addressing the needs in the short, medium, and long term, really, a first step I would love to see happen is doing a facilities assessment across our city and looking at both public and private establishments and what sort of recreational needs they fit, what audiences are they serving, and then getting a better sense of what everybody's doing and how can we partner better, leverage our partnerships to reach our community with opportunities for recreation and wellness and fitness. A great example is just better understanding, particularly for me, would be Holy Angels. And I know they have a sports dome. Is there opportunities for us to utilize that sports dome for any programs we would like to see? And just leveraging these partnerships, establishing new ones. I also think it would be really important to rebrand our current community center and use what we do have right now to be more multi-generational. I think because it is a fully accessible building, by default, it's where we do a lot of our older adult programming. So a lot of people say, oh, that's the senior center. And that's not true. And I think we need to do a concerted effort to really rebrand it and get different types of programming in the building that are more multi-generational. And we all are aware of the need at Woodlake Nature Center and the need for a new building. And I intentionally put that picture down on the lower left corner. That's Westwood Hills' new nature center that just opened a few months ago. And if you haven't gone, I could definitely help arrange a tour so we can see what a modern-day nature center looks like. But one of the elements in their design is they have a large grape room that can hold 150-plus people for a wedding, a banquet. And it can also be divided up into smaller classrooms for environmental education, our community group space. So that's definitely something as we move towards a new nature center building to build into our design. And I think a last thing that we can definitely do in the near future is really increase the indoor athletics at our ice arena. Now that we've reinvested into our new system from R20 to ammonia base, we're able to pull the ice out a lot quicker and do dry floor events. So some months of the year, we are able to do more indoor athletics. Actually, just before we started, saw a pickleball net indoors in an ice arena. And that made me think, hmm, maybe we could do some pickleball at the end of winter indoors at our ice arena. And Manager Chris Wybe and I have been talking about trying to start a walking program in Rank One because we have a perfect, kind of like a track around Rank One that we could definitely turn on music and people could walk laps on a hot day in the summer, really, any day throughout the year. But kind of get creative in how we could look at what we have to address some of these needs. And in planning for the future, I do think it's going to be really important to understand how this pandemic is going to affect recreation and in particular, our fitness facilities. Nobody knows how it's going to be impacting it. I think people have been working indoors and outside for well over a year by the time the pandemic was at a better place. And I don't think people understand if residents would be rushing back to workout at gyms or if they are going to continue to do what they've been doing. So I think just understanding that before we invest in any major fitness facility is important. And just financially recovering from the pandemic and being in a more financially certain time. Continuing conversations with potential project partners and talking with my colleagues in other cities. And we are surrounded by two cities that desire the same thing, a community center. Are there ways we could partner with our neighbors in meeting these needs in a greater geographical area, not just Richfield, but potentially Bloomington and the Dino and then building a private center? Also, looking at the timing with some of our other work plans. There's other work that we are doing right now. But when the time is right, you're developing a strategic plan in looking at things such as a location. If we were able to build a community center, is there a spot that we already have that could work that's not on private property? And really, just is a community center feasible in our future? And if it's not, really dig into addressing the needs through different alternatives. I'm going to turn it over to Director Regis to talk a little bit more about the financials.
Thank you, Amy. Basically, we've been working with three different levels of a facility. A $40 to $50 million facility, I'll include the basics, meeting space, program rooms, workout facilities, gyms, and a track. Then we move up to a $70 to $80 million facility, which includes everything above plus indoor courts. And then we go one step further to an $80 to $90 million facility, which will include everything else and also an indoor pool. We're assuming an additional $1.5 million for parking. However, based on what St. Louis Park found or when they were doing their work six years ago, that may be a low number. The space out there is a little bit tight, so parking may be an issue out there. Side acquisition costs right now, I believe, are $3.4 million. In addition to that, there'll be demolition and abatement costs of approximately $250,000. And also, that whole side out there, Veterans Park, a lot of that was a dumping zone. There may be soil correction needs. I know when we built the locker room addition and also with the banjo out there, they had soil issues. They had to correct the soil and things like that. So I don't know what the cost of that would be for a facility that large. So those are probably most of the estimated costs at this point. Okay? Next slide. Some of the project funding options, general obligation tax, abatement funds, general obligation bonds through a referendum, lease agreement or lease arrangement bonds, where the city's economic development authority would issue bonds and then the city would be an obligation payable to pay off the bonds and things like that. It would be a mutual work between the two entities. And then basically, all the options will require debt service tax levies. There's no way around that. The only way to really fund the construction costs and building the facility. Impact on the tax levy. Just to give a little history. 2021, the debt service tax levy was $3.5 million. In 2022, it's estimated to be $3.66 million. Now, if we issue debt for the three project levels, we're looking at potential $3.6 million on top of those levies, $5.6 million on top of that, or almost $6.2 million on top of that. So we're looking potentially at total levies of $7.2 million and over $9 million if these facilities are building, we issue that kind of debt. So what would the impact be on the residents? Well, if you're looking at the $40 to $50 million project, we're looking at $227 increase for, I looked at suit market values, excuse me, a $250,000 home and a $275,000 home. So the $40 to $50 million issue for this smaller facility, we're looking at a $227 increase and a $253 increase. The next level, we're looking at $351 and $392. At the $80 to $90 million level, we're looking at $392 and $438 increase. Now, just a little perspective on this. When we issued our levies for 2021 for these two levels of property, the tax increase for $250,000, almost $40, and for $275,000, it was $46. So basically, if we look at just the smallest level, we're increasing the, well, the increase would be five times over what the residents saw as an increase for 2021. So that's a pretty significant impact on the residents. Okay. Estimated operations, and I just want to emphasize these are estimates. It was really hard to determine what kind of revenues we would generate. Amy and I worked together on this. So we're looking at revenues and we're looking at expenditures. With expenditures, I kind of looked at what the municipal setting costs are and tried to factor those in, what would be for a community center and stuff. But as you can see, basically, with our estimates, we're not even covering our operating costs. And that's, other than Minnetonka and I think Eden Prairie, that's pretty much, pretty common. In my discussions with Amy and what she has found and things like that, most community centers do not cover their operations and they need to be subsidized or there has to be a partnership somewhere to help cover the additional costs that would make them break even. Okay. So if we do have to subsidize it, so we're going to assume a $1 million subsidy, what would the additional tax be? The subsidy would probably come, we would have to come, from additional tax levy dollars that we'd have to put in there and then transfer into the fund to cover it. For $250,000 home, we have $0.54 addition. And for a $275,000 home, it would be additional $59.79.
Yeah, and I wanted to keep in mind too, our current socioeconomics in Richfield and looking at data from the Met Council. You can see where Richfield is in comparison to the county. And we continue to fall behind other municipalities' median household incomes. So it's something in recreation, we always keep in mind in our program costs in trying to make things as affordable as possible and partner in a lot of ways with different organizations to ensure our offerings are accessible to everybody. And also, looking at what percentage of our community is below the federal poverty line. You can see it has gone down, which is a good thing, but it still is significantly high.
And some other considerations, we've kind of touched on these a little bit. Still, it would probably need to be subsidized. We currently subsidize the ice arena pool and special facilities to approximately $230,000 for 2021. We split that between the three. Amy, building that size, Amy already mentioned that, about future facility capital maintenance, how to fund that. Some of the facilities that started a replacement fund or things like that, we're going to have to factor that in and how would we do that? Because after five to 10 years, things will wear out, things will break. You're going to have to try to correct those and fix them and maybe it will cost money. Also, there'll be an impact on the city's debt limit. I think approximately right now, the debt limit at the end of 2020, I think, was approximately $63 million. I think Ellers is estimated, it's gone up a little bit to around $70, $72 million. I think I could be wrong on that. We're going to issue $70 to $90 million of debt. We're going to be right up at that debt limit or even possibly exceed it. And we can't really, I don't think we can legally exceed the debt limit. Also, impact on our bond rating. In our last bond rating call with our last issue, S and P was a little bit concerned about the level of debt that we had currently and things like that. So this was just from the compound that the city had. Whether it would affect our rating or not, I don't know, but they were a little bit concerned. And also, another thing too, is other capital projects that have required debt funding. 65th Street is going to come online here in 2022, I think, 2023. So we're going to have to issue debt for that. And we've issued debt for a community center that pushes it up right at our limit. That's going to affect it. And I know there's several road projects in the pipeline also that are going to require debt funding and things like that, which we're tax levy supported. And then finally, just based on what Amy's talking a little bit in the previous slides, based on the economics of Richfield, this project may not be financially prudent for the city at this time. Just that, I think, you're looking at the impacts of the taxes on residents and just the taxes on the city. We have the levy and things like that.
So moving forward, in some additional recommendations, I think another big one for the timing of all of this is just to recover from the pandemic and really understand some of the outcomes from it. In addressing the identified recreation and community needs with a variety of solutions, it may be in the short term to medium term, we're not able to put all of our eggs in one basket, so to speak, in a community center. But we might have to parse out with creative solutions, meeting some of these identified needs and include a strategic financial plan and how we can address these needs. I think it would be really important, moving forward, also to continue to cultivate partnerships with our existing partners and new partners, including the American Legion, and address recreation and community needs. Just in my conversations in the last month with colleagues in other cities, again, there's other communities, our neighbors, that are really at the same place, that have the same needs and desires, and exploring other ways to potentially partner. And then lastly, looking at the timing of this project and other projects that are going on and develop a strategic plan to really look, I think, long-term, if it is feasible, to build a community center. And what would that look like? Where would it go? I think there are definite needs that would address, but making sure it's a sound decision for our residents. And that's all we have, so we can open it up for discussion now and questions.
Thank you so much. Thanks. Great. Now I can see folks on this view. So thank you to Director Regis and Director Merkel for the overview and the presentation. Comments, questions from council member? This is our time to really have a great discussion. Consider this and move forward or not, so we can continue with the second part of the plan with the American Legion site. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to be super clear. I mean, I think staff has laid out a really good argument for why none of these big builds make sense right now. I just want to be very clear. Has the city approached just buying the land and like leasing back the building or some other way to meet the Legion's need to continue to use the land for their meeting space? But it strikes me that if if the community center is still a future need and we're keeping that in our parks plan, we are we are either moving on this land or we're not. So is there any possibility of buying the land but not building 40 plus million dollars on it?
Yes. So everything that we've heard from the Legion so far would not make that consistent with their needs. We do have representatives from the Legion here tonight. So if they wanted to answer that, I think they could. They are working with potential buyers that would be able to build something, a private development that would have meeting space for them and a place to socialize. And right now, renovating the current building is not in their plans.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, hi. Yep, go ahead, Attorney Coyle. I think you're unmuted still, though.
There we go. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak briefly. My name's Peter Coyle. I represent the Legion post and I'm advising them on the opportunity to sell their property and hopefully redevelop it for future use. We support the staff's recommendation to you. We certainly respect the hand, the desire within the community to try to address the community center need. We think we are the right, the wrong property at the wrong time. We have a market that we think will redevelop this property to private purchasers. We think it will command a price that's going to be important for the Legion as it tries to reposition itself long term. And frankly, the needs of the city don't seem like they line up very well with the priorities and needs of the Legion itself. And so, you know, with all due respect, council member, congratulations, by the way, on your election and joining the council. We just don't feel like this opportunity lines up very well for us in the city. I'm happy to respond further if you have questions for me.
Thank you. And before I go to questions from council members, I do know that the Legion folks wanted to present for 10 minutes too. So I just wanted to ask, after this question, is that a good time? So we haven't, we want, I want to make sure that if you guys do want to present, you do. So are you still interested in presenting for 10 minutes?
Madam Mayor, in the interest of your time, I think we've made our comments. We wanted to we wanted to be clear about our position, but we also wanted to thank you for the diligence that you and your staff have put into trying to make this decision. And and we hope it's a decision that allows us to move forward, obviously in conjunction with your staff to plan for our future. So we don't have anything else to present to you this evening.
Thank you very much. All right. Any questions specifically for for Attorney Coyle and in response to what he just shared with us before we go back to the broader conversation? No? All right. Looks like there's no questions. So any other additional comments, discussion items on?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I I think the I have more comments I'll share later, but one specific question. I think bringing in the the need and the still very open ended, but the plans for the nature center at this point, I think, is absolutely pertinent. I'm curious, the I know the existing community center is also not young, but I I haven't, I don't actually know if we anticipate a certain time when that would need a more extensive renovation or complete rebuild. And I I don't know. I've certainly heard residents speak about a some sort of agreement that was made decades ago that like expansion couldn't happen on that site. And so I guess I'm just wondering how how soon in the near future are there potential renovations or developments to that building? And what are our options there?
Yeah, thank you for the that question, Councilmember Wayland. You know, my understanding is that my predecessor, Director Tuppit Hopper, had very strategically kind of reinvested in the current community center about $500,000 over the last decade in improvements to make sure it's accessible. So there's been improvements with things like the elevator. They have a new HVAC system and heat system in the building. The overall infrastructure is sound, but you know, it is a dated building. I always like to joke to my staff, it's my mid-century modern. It has that look to it. Yeah, so it has a, you know, a fun look. I haven't heard anything that would preclude us from exploring, you know, a new build on the current site or an expansion. You know, that's something I would have to do a little more research on. I would be happy to, though, back to you. But yeah, I mean, it's in thinking about our future in a potential building, I think that could, you know, be on the table as a site for it. It definitely has a high accessibility and is right in the middle of town, which is nice. Oh, I should note too, probably about a year and a half ago, our buildings maintenance manager, Dave Conrad, and I kind of looked at the current state of Woodlake Nature Center and the community center and really looked at which one really is in the greater need. And it definitely is Woodlake. I mean, I could go on for a while of some of the issues with that building. You know, it's it's over $10,000 a year to heat and cool because of its inefficiencies with its windows and doors. And spatially, it's it's really hard right now with, well, it's closed right now, but it is hard when it is open because it just can't accommodate large groups and also the public at the same time. And it's it's not accessible for guests as well with with any disabilities. So looking at a new building for the nature center would be probably our top priority. And then renovating and our, you know, completely reconstructing a community center would be second.
Other questions or discussion items? Councilmember Supple.
So looking at what Director Regis said about the debt limit and that, it doesn't look like we can afford to be starting to build from the ground up on a community center. So I would be in support of doing a facilities assessment, seeing what we have and how we can best make use of what we have. And I also understand that there is a great deal of need at Woodlake Nature Center. So I'm hoping we can find some partners through the bonding bill or other regional partners to help us with that. Because I do think that Woodlake Nature Center is a regional space. And if we could use some of that space for the community and the banquet, it would would also kind of solve two problems at the same time. So I'm fully supportive of doing of a facilities assessment and to try and figure out how can we meet those recreational needs in other ways.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Chapman.
Good evening, Mayor. And I just want to join other people's comments and just really give give our our staff a huge thank you. I appreciate the consideration that they showed both to our request, but also to to the Legion. And so I know I know it it took it took a lot of work and it took a lot of hours. And and so I just want to say thank you. I also appreciate how how thorough and practical the response was. And I think it's pretty clear, this is not a feasible option. One question I did have, you know, and I kind of put things like this when we look at what we need to bond for in in order of priority, our our roads and our existing infrastructure is older and is a really high priority. And as much as we want things that and would just be incredible value adds to our community, I think we have a we have trade offs. And one of those trade offs is we only have so much bonding capacity and and it has to be put towards things we're responsible for right right now. I did have a question with regards to partnering with the school district. I know they looked at the possibilities of a community center. Are those conversations as part of the feasibility, have we approached the school? Have we looked at a community center option in conjunction with the school that's maybe closer, maybe in Augsburg Park or somewhere where we the school could get more benefit out of it? And we could maybe get to share some of the financial burden and share some of the benefits?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember Chapman. I have not met the school district. I think with just the constraints of the pandemic and as this came up, I, you know, haven't reached out to them. But I do think that is an avenue worth pursuing and see if there is something we could do. It is nice to note, I did meet with some high school students at Augsburg Park right before it got really cold. And high schoolers have reached out and said they really want a gym or a place to work out in. And, you know, I sat and talked with them about a lot of the things we're talking about and told them I would bring, you know, their concerns to to meetings and decisions. But no, I do think the school district will be a key partner in whatever we do. And I know they've been doing a lot of work with their partners, with the Boys and Girls Club and things like that. And I think we could definitely collaborate in in more areas together.
Thank you so much, Director Merkel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just also want to be really crystal clear about expectations for staff taking on this project. It sounds like we're getting consensus that to move forward as Director Merkel suggested, but her plate is so full in 2021 with organized collection and some other projects. So it would not be, you know, like, we're going to be able to take this up in the in the next couple of months. Also, I think that Director Merkel made a really good observation in that we want to see how the pandemic impacted both the city, but also recreation in general and and take that into account. But I I just wanted to be clear about that.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Wayland.
Yeah, I will echo the the financial piece is pretty clear. So I I think that alone is is worth kind of kind of answers things for me. I know I'm often the the person speaking up to say that raising taxes is not always bad, that it's how we invest in things we need. But raising them 25% or more is is bad. And so the other things I'll say, I think the 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 need I have heard the clearest desire for from community members, even from before I thought about running for council, is the the banquet and meeting spaces. Having worked in a church, we got, we were like nearly always full and rented out precisely because Richfield does not have many of those spaces, especially ones where it's okay to bring in your own food and birthday cake and whatever. But even to that piece, I I don't think we know yet when we're going to want to have large parties together inside again. Hopefully, that is something we can do and not be worried about before too long. But so I think the the waiting post pandemic and also like post hauling workload wise to explore our options, exploring them with the the nature center. I do think exploring them with the the Legion, and I guess I'm not realizing this maybe is a question for the Legion. I don't know that it needs to be answered tonight, since it sounds like this conversation would be ongoing. But I do wonder, not not knowing how often they meet or would be using their meeting space, if if plans go forward with something where it is, I know there's obviously a lot more conversation to happen about what what development there makes the most sense and meets the needs of the community and is complimentary to the park. But if it were something like I've heard proposed where it is veteran housing with a meeting space on the first floor, I'm I'm guessing, but it's maybe not a fair assumption, that whether it is all one space that the Legion uses sometimes, but is open to others renting, as I believe they already do with their current space, or if it was multiple spaces and community groups could use the others. So I I think there's possibilities in that space and whatever that development looks like and that that piece is worth exploring and even. Yeah, so that conversation, I think, needs to continue. And then the last comment I'll say is that to that sort of proposed idea I just heard, I've heard nearly as much interest, if not more interest, from community members in in that kind of idea of having some veteran housing, having some meeting space for the Legion, the possibility of a potential like restaurant, like any of those ideas, I've heard as much excitement about that as a a community center. And so I think this is the the right path forward to, yeah, set it set aside the idea of a community center there and explore long term what how we can meet those needs in multiple places around the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. I'm not sure if the Legion is interested in answering that question right now in terms of the ideas for community space that could be accessible to the public to rent or if that's something to just take into consideration and kind of loop back on as discussions advance. Yep, go ahead.
Yes, I think the Legion would be open to talking about that. By no means is it something that's off the table. So those are things we'd be happy to discuss as time goes on. Under the right conditions, I'm sure they would be happy to do that.
Thank you. I'll just add a couple things since the council members have gone. For me, this decision and my perspective is pretty square in the know. You know, I'm not interested in supporting a community center at this time. And I do think that staff has done an exceptional job. On this site, staff has done an exceptional job of doing a ton of research and analysis of that research and putting it all together to make a statement and give us a picture as to why, as Attorney Coyle said, actually, you know, the wrong time and wrong timing in the relocation. And I I think there's a couple, there's a couple different things I just want to talk about. There's the immediate issue with the Legion. And I think that there was, it's very very important for our residents to do the due diligence of looking at all of the different options, focusing on the small area plan and really making sure that we can continue to partner in a way that will benefit the best interests of the Legion and the community. And I think that the steps we've taken, though they're very difficult, were the right ones. And then there's the long term, the long term planning that we need to think of. And this situation with the Legion is a perfect example of what we're going through collectively as a nation and as a community. Things are not going back to the way they used to be. Things have changed dramatically, whether it's socioeconomically, whether it's public health wise, you name it, things have changed. And they have been changing. And so right now, I just want to acknowledge that we are all in a time of drastic, drastic difficulty, challenges, tensions in ways that we've never had to experience and hold before. And this project is an example of what that looks like in one project multiplied by multiple experiences and identities that we have as individuals, as families, as community. Things are really tough right now. And also, that puts a lot of burden, this this example of the Legion, but all of these different examples, especially leading as a city, on our staff. So I just, I do want to acknowledge the tremendous amount of work and pressure that our staff has had to carry for so long since the beginning of the pandemic, since before the pandemic and continuing and then continued on in different examples, whether it's having to do additional work to restructure our budgets to to implement and take on CARES funding or redistributing that money to community or thinking about how to go remote. And then here's another example of added pressure and stress on our staff when you guys have been at max capacity. And there's no, there's no, I'm not saying that to put any blame, but just to acknowledge the situation that we're in right now. And I think we're in this space between, we have these very immediate needs. And those immediate needs are the Legion needs the Legion needs to sell their property and the Legion needs to secure their future as an organization and financially, and that need is immediate. And we have to do our due diligence and work with our community to think about how can we inform that so that that decision is made in a way again, that can benefit community and um, and the Legion and then the added pressure that that has. But then we're in a space right now where we do have to think about how are we going to plan for the future and what does it look like? Because the way that we're doing things right now is not sustainable at all. And and that's because we're trying right now, we're in this phase where we're trying to continue to function as we used to, but having to change how we do that dramatically. And then knowing that the future is not going to look like what the past looked like or what it looks like now. And our energy stores are depleted. Um, and things are really tough. So I'm seeing all of this and I understand it's long winded, but it's to keep the focus on things are so different in ways that we've never experienced and we're in between this space. We're in the in between space right now. And we want to support our staff and our community to restore those energy stores and do what's right and address the immediate needs that we have now. But also, how can we pivot and do things differently? So because the way we're doing it is not going to work. So what I'm trying to also say is this, to me, um, is another example of why figuring out what strategic planning looks like in the future, again, knowing that there's a lot of things to balance. It might not be right now. But it also can't be way in the future, like let's just wait and see what happens with COVID. It has to be, let's plan for an uncertain future and narrow down so that our staff, our commu- in our community can focus on the things that are most important to us. So that we can plan accordingly and not just keep accumulating bonding and debt, you know, maxing out our debt limit, but to do that in a smart way, taking the big picture into account and alleviating, you know, some pressure um, on our staff to not have to be reacting to all these different things, but to say, we've come together with our community to really prioritize these few things that we know we want to build for our future. Um, and I think the work we're doing to invest in um, community engagement and the equity work we're doing is gonna, those are going to be the vehicles of how we do that. But we have to be mindful that right now, staff in our community is in this space where it's just more, 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 more. And we can't, we can't do that. Um, so I, so that's why I'm saying this is for me, not the right time for this community center on this location. But also, this is a symptom or one little example of a bigger need that we have to meet together collectively as a community. And that's focus in, narrow down, find ways to restore energy, work together and and identify what our assets are. Director Merkel talked about the ICE arenas and the the revamp that we did. How can we best leverage that? You know, what are the other assets that we have? And how do we engage community through the equity work we're doing through our boards and commissions to inform that? But in a way that's smart, that is not just do more with less, really, um, it just thinking and leaning differently. So I'm sorry for that little soapbox moment, but just sitting here listening, I was like, this is an example of what we're experiencing collectively and we need to understand that we need to find ways to meet these immediate needs of our communities. And the answer isn't not always just going to be yes, 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 more, more, more. And this is just an example of that in the concrete, but something that can help guide us for the future because we do have to do things differently. Any other comments? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
That, that's a tough act to follow, but I I did have one, one just more narrow comment about what this, what this project reminds me of. And first off, as you know, I've had a lot of background with with city planning and other things about the built form, but I'm a little bit of a noob with some of the finance stuff. So it was very helpful to me to read the memo and just understand in the specific project, how dependent our ability to borrow is on our tax base. And I think when we think about this project, which is now likely to go forward with the private development, I I'm quite sure it's going to be controversial in whatever form it happens. This is a really tangible example of what happens when we don't build our tax base enough or what what we're missing out on. And there are many important things we borrow for, but something like we can't afford a community center because we don't have enough tax base is a lot more tangible than our sewer pipes are too old or other things that that are important, but are a little bit less visible. So I appreciate the understanding that it offered me and I I think it will be helpful to talk about in the community and and hopefully this project, when it moves forward, will help build our tax base and move us in the right direction.
Absolutely. Other comments from folks? Councilmember Troutman?
Mayor, and I just appreciate and really echo your your comments, um, and uh, Councilmember uh, Hayford O'Leary's comment about the the capacity of our of our staff and the capacity of our tax base. Those are, those are real and finite um, uh, substances. And so it's really, I just couldn't couldn't agree more. And just in terms of those, like the the trade offs that we have when we think about our tax capacity, we still have, we still have roads like 65th Street that are not handicap accessible and are surrounded by senior housing. And so, so things like that are real priorities. And when, when we look, as helpful as the data is that says it's a high priority, you know, to to build a community center, if compared to Wood Lake Nature Center and other things, we're, but we're not actually asking, and I don't know that we even can ask the the questions through a survey. They're just the trade offs that we have to make, which is, do you want, do we want our, do we want improved and sustainable infrastructure and uh, handicap accessible roads on 65th Streets for its community center? Yeah, those are, those are the kinds of trade offs that we have to, we have to be mindful of. But I appreciate especially your words, Mayor, about about our staff. It's a, it's a really good reminder.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Uh, I'll just add on a, on a side note, um, the presentation really got me excited about the potential we have to really determine our future together. We have a lot of assets and while we're in a crisis situation right now, this is a time for us to plan. And Richfield has been in a position in recent years and we are continuing to be in a position where we're one of the most desirable communities for organizations, businesses, developers, families to come to, and that is continuing. And so given that, how can we really dream big, focus on a few things we really want for the future and make sure that that happens? And after I'm getting the the funding for the underpass, I'm like, we can totally, we can do this. If we keep taking this approach of focusing in on those key things that are going to position us very well. Um, and just after in that presentation, there are challenges and there's um, resources that we really don't have, but there's way more opportunities. And so let's focus on on those opportunities, narrow in and make those things happen. Um, Councilmember Supple, I know, I think you had your hand up.
I was saving this for the end because it's slightly off topic, but when you were talking about the creative ideas that you came up with, like the walking track at the ICE arena, I am looking forward to when the pandemic's over and we can go in and see all the renovations and all the different possibilities there. So I just wanted to throw that in at the end here. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Supple. Um, I did, I, I, we are just wrapping up um, the renovation project with the HVAC system and it did get a little delayed and a lot of it had to do with COVID and the production of the, I think, the steel for the HVAC actually. So the last of the project is is wrapping up um, this week. So in the city manager's report on Friday, I do have an update with photos and Chris and I have talked about doing um, in the interim, like a a virtual video where he can give you a a tour of the mechanicals, the improved um, upgrades to the bathrooms that are up to ADA code and the new HVAC system. And then, of course, you know, post pandemic, we would love to offer in person tours so everyone can see about the improvements. So, thank you.
That's so exciting. I'll pass it to City Manager Rodriguez. I know you like to do a summary at the end of what you heard and then just confirm um, the direction that you heard.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So what I've heard tonight is not to pursue um, trying to purchase the property, um, the American Legion's property, but instead to um, pursue what Amy has laid out, um, at what, at a time, probably 2022, uh, maybe late 2021, um, and to partner with other, with the school districts and um, other communities to explore all options. Um, and then also, if uh, Director Stark could maybe talk a little bit about where they're at with the small area plan. I know they've had an initial meeting with a consultant and they plan to involve the American Legion in that process as well.
Well, thank you, uh, City Manager Rodriguez and Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, yeah, we have had some initial conversations and we've been talking about this for a few months now. And the word that keeps popping up for us as we discuss this is campus. We really view this site as a campus, um, that's public and private uses, so many public uses there with the, obviously, the pool, the ICE arena, the Veterans Memorial, miniature golf, the um, and the pavilion, uh, and and of course, the um, fan show. And so we want to look at this whole site like a puzzle. And, you know, the puzzle has to be one cohesive picture. And for that to be the case, the individual pieces have to fit in. And that's, that's why we're doing this small area plan is to make sure, and it's not just the American Legion site, uh, you know, someday the funeral home site may redevelop. Um, and even across the street, we want to make sure that there are complementary uses to this campus. Uh, and so we really do want to take a holistic look at this. Uh, we've had, we've had a great kind of uh, initial kickoff meeting with the consultants. They, I think their first step is going to be talking with some of the primary stakeholders, which would include the Legion, um, some of the Legion's potential developers, the funeral home, uh, Director Merkel. Um, and then really focusing on the immediate neighborhood. Uh, what are, what are some of the concerns and desires from the immediate neighborhood? And then the community at large, because this is a community asset. It's not just a, a neighborhood asset. Um, we do plan on completing this in the timeframe uh, we've given. I think, uh, I can't tell you the exact dates, but I believe we have five months left in the process. Um, five or six, and we we uh, feel comfortable that we will be able to complete all this. You know, the, I will say the public engagement will be kind of, we'll, we'll be making up it as we, as we go. Uh, we don't know exactly what the public engagement will look like. Um, you know, in an ideal world, we'd be able to do that face to face. Um, it's, it's going to be difficult to do that outdoors in the winter in Minnesota and we can't do it indoors. Um, the, to do it virtually doesn't work for everybody. You know, not everybody has those capabilities. Uh, and not everybody communicates well that way. So it is, like I said, going to be kind of um, figuring it out as we go. And so any of you, if you have ideas on good ways to engage the community, please email them to me. Um, we plan on giving regular updates through the city manager's report and coming back, uh, I I don't remember in the scope if it's coming back to um, one or two work sessions prior to the final product. So that's where we're going from here.
Thank you, Director Stark. And I just wanted um, to reiterate a couple of things that were said previously, but just bring it up again. So in that process, um, I had understood that there's a possibility for the Legion and whatever developer they're interested in working with or developers to be integrated into that process, essentially building their plan hand in hand, um, as this process goes forward.
Right. And when I talked about this integrative site, uh, as we've talked to developers, they see equal benefit in that to them as we do to ourselves. So it's, you know, we have the same self interest in making sure that this is a um, a well, um, a, a very cohesive picture. Uh, you know, and I don't want to get ahead of what some of the outcomes will be, but as I've talked about in the past, I think we want to make sure that the park amenities are as visible and as available um, to foot traffic, car traffic, bike traffic as they can be. And we don't want a private development to be a hindrance on that. Um, we, we also want them to be visible, our park facilities. Uh, and, you know, we may, um, I don't know if we're going to be looking at, for example, different ways of accessing facilities or not, uh, but I think that the we've got a broad scope that we can look at to make sure that um, that we are um, we are going to end up with this campus feel. And it, it may not be done with the development of the American Legion. Uh, it may give us some some future direction on when we make future park improvements, uh, how we would do those. It may give us some direction on if and when the funeral home goes up for sale, what we would look at there. So it's, it's both a short term and a long term planning process.
Great. Thank you so much, Director Stark. Um, any other comments before I wrap us up a few minutes early so that we can have a short little break before our council meeting? Nope. All right. Well, I just want to reiterate and say thank you again to everybody from the American Legion, to the membership, our staff. Um, and and everyone involved in kind of getting us to this place. Um, because I know it was quite a bit of work and we're very thankful for it and we will be putting all of this to great use to, not only for this plan for the Legion, but for the future of the community. So um, thanks, everyone. I will adjourn our meeting and I'll see some of you in a few minutes for the council meeting. Thank you.